Good evening, thanks for being with us. We will call the Harris County Board of Commissioners meeting to order October 6th, 2020. If you will join me in the invocation of this. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings of this beautiful Harris County day. We thank you, Lord, for the blessings of those who keep us safe and provide the services for our residents. Lord, we pray for our guidance and discernment as we make decisions for the residents of this county. We pray, Lord, for our nation and its leadership. And, Lord, we just pray that you can keep us all safe. And we pray from your guidance. All these things you ask of me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is the minutes from the regular session of September the fifteenth. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve? A motion carries? Motion carries. Uh, no, here some citizens and is there any old business? No old business, and I'm going to insert just a great new business item on here. There was a committee meeting yesterday. The Chief Justice of Georgia Supreme Court is, has created a committee to look at holding jury trials and getting in the courthouse and what needs to be done to keep that safe from the jurors. And Judge Martin Gottfried, he made that first meeting yesterday. The committee must provide a plan back to the Chief Justice. They will approve that. We should have one more meeting, but they are looking at beginning jury trials in January. So just I'm gonna let y'all know that. The next item is the proclamation for Head Start Awareness. The National Head Start Awareness, which is enrichment services. The enrichment services program has requested a proclamation regarding Head Start Awareness. Whereas, Enrichment Services Program, E S P, is a nonprofit community action agency founded in 1965 with permission to eliminate poverty through education, services, and partnerships. Serving eight counties in Georgia and one county in Alabama. And whereas, E S P is committed to increasing the awareness of the impact of poverty and implementing strategies for reducing it. And whereas, E S P motivates residents for a desirable future and encourages them to become a helping contributor to the life of our community. And whereas, Early Head Start and Head Start are national school readiness programs that provide comprehensive education, health, nutrition, and parent and mom services to children between the ages of birth to five years. And whereas, Early Head Start and Head Start have nurtured the promise of a better future for children and their families. And more than 1,153 children will benefit from enrolling in the Head Start program. And whereas, October is National Early Head Start and Head Start Awareness Month. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Harris County, Georgia, do hereby proclaim October the 2020 as Head Start Awareness Month and cause this absurdity to the attention of the citizens of Harris County. So proclaim this sixth day of October, 2020. Motion and a vote is needed, so is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve this proclamation for enrichment services program, the National Head Start Awareness Month.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? A motion? Motion carries, thank you, Harry. The next item on the agenda is an agreement with Trailer Business Services and Personal Property Verification. This is the annual document of the Trailer Business Services in connection with personal property verification in the tax assessor's office. Funding is included in the FY 2021 Tax Assessor's Budget Agreement of $7,500. And this is just one of those things that we do every year to just kind of like check the box. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve. I'll say.
Alright, there's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Harry. Harry, your vote on item three?
It looked like he shook his head yes, but he's muted.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is request for tax refund for Virginia Carter, 663 Lloyd Ranch Drive and Unit 2. The amount is $49.28, which is the applicable tax. The reason is the vehicle was sold on August 27th, 2020 before the tag was due on August 31st, 2020. The registration was paid on August 17th, 2020. The Tax Commissioner agrees and the Board of Tax Assessors agrees. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll say.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor to approve the tax refund?
Aye.
Okay, Don Hader, so the motion carries. Okay, Mr. County Manager, your turn.
Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, the next item is number five. Bid reward replacement kitchen equipment for the prison. At previous commission meeting, the board approved the whole bid of $18,992 submitted by Alfred Pritchard Restaurant Equipment Company for three pieces of replacement prison kitchen equipment during the August 18th meeting of this year. Since that award, the company, Alfred Pritchard Restaurant Equipment Company, has stated they will not honor their submitted bid. The purchase order has been canceled, company omitted from the vendor list, and the company notified as such. The next and only other bidder was Mobile Fixtures of Columbus with a bid of slightly more of $20,738.17 for the same identical equipment. Mobile Fixtures stated that the bid amount remains the same and they can supply the county with the equipment within 21 to 28 days after receipt of the purchase order. The bid is still $2,761.83, which is 13.3% low budget, budget amount of $23,500. So motion or vote needed to re-award this bid to Mobile Fixtures in the amount of $20,738.17.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve this, is there a second?
I'll say.
Motion second, any discussion?
I just have one question. Since we, the other company took off and said they couldn't do the bid that we awarded them, we don't have to rebid this, we can just go to the next?
Yes, yes. Now, if, if the other company said they couldn't honor their number, then we have to go and rebid. But since the other company said their numbers are good without any changes, then it's comfortable to go and just award to the next, the next highest bidder.
Alright.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, the motion is approved.
The next item is budget amendment number 11 for this, for the fiscal year that is ended June 30, 2020. And it's for the Federal Cares Act grant to properly budget for that. The county did receive a total of little over $1.6 million for the Federal Cares Act grant. A special revenue fund was created to account for these funds, which were quickly allocated toward public safety employees' salary benefits to meet the state's very short deadline. Of the 1.6 million, a little over 1,800,000, or 67.5% of those funds were allocated in the previous year's budget, the end of June 30, 2020, and the remaining amount of $520,279.29, or about 32.5%, will be allocated in the current year's budget. Budget amendment number 11 reflects the grant allocation of the 1.8 million, 1.08 million dollars. You can see in budget amendment number 11, you can see what that money was allocated for, namely salary benefits of public safety departments, namely the Sheriff's Department and EMS. So, motion or vote needed to, meant to approve is budget amendment number 11.
Okay, is there a motion?
I believe we approve a budget amendment number 11.
And I'll second that, is there any discussion? Any no discussion, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved.
The next item is item number seven, budget amendment number 12 for the previous fiscal year at the end of June 20, June 30, 2020. In this budget amendment, this is a kind of a housekeeping issue. At the, at the end of each budget year, a final budget amendment is created to ensure that all departmental line items among all the departments of the county are sufficient as possible and to distribute health reimbursement arrangement money from the non-departmental budget to all the other budgets that use those funds. This annual budget amendment has zero amount, but will assist in audit preparations. So basically, what, what happened was, in non-departmental, we have a line called Health Reimbursement Arrangements, and that is some dollar amounts, and that is distributed at the end of the year to each of the departmentals, each of the departments that use that money. Some departments use it, some didn't. So those are all distributed among the departments that used it. That's what most of this is for. However, some of those same funds, some of the health reimbursement arrangement money, was also used for professional services in the administration department and general supplies for portal actions and technical services under deputy corridor calls to help prop those three departments, three line items up. Again, the amendment is for zero amount, especially moving money around, then do the health reimbursement arrangements, so staff recommends approval and motion or vote needed. And this will assist greatly in the audit preparation, that is on your own.
I make a motion that we approve budget amendment 12 as stated.
I'll say.
Okay, any discussion?
I would like to know, you know, the fiscal year that ended June 30, 2020 is done. And there was only 12 budget amendments for the whole year. Sign of goodwill, just left over here.
Aye, all those, all those in favor? Okay, Harry?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, motion carries.
Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, the next item is number eight. Authorization to apply for a Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program Grant from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources for Elsley Park Development. The county has been working on and continues to work on the development of Elsley Park, but needs additional funds to continue the major work. The annual Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program Grant cycle has opened and county staff is working on a grant application to continue the development of Elsley Park and to submit the grant application on the deadline of October 16th. This grant is a 75-25, where the state will give 275 and the county will contribute a minimum of 25. And the minimum grant amount from the state is a half million dollars. So the county's grant application in particular is to develop the 2.6 miles of trail, eight feet wide, using compacted ground, pave 1.25 miles of trail for a 10-foot wide ADA trail, pave 200 liter feet of sidewalk for a 6-foot wide ADA sidewalk from the parking area to the lodge, two gravelly trail paths north and south, wooden boardwalks around the lake, typically over the swampy areas, and a boardwalk along the lake bank for fishing. The grant amount would be $500,000 from the state and $200,000 from the county. And these funds are already in budget as plus 14 in recreation. The county will be notified if the application is successful during early 2021. These are highly competitive grants. Not only are cities and counties at the state applying for this, but also state agencies. So each city and each county and each state agency is in the running for this, for these grant funds. Highly, highly competitive. But, but the winners will not be known until early 2021. And the funds won't be, be able to be spent until late summer 2021. So if approved, the grant funds and the county match can be properly budgeted for in next year's budget. So motion or vote needed to authorize this online grant application to be submitted to the state and authorize the chairman, myself, and the county clerk to sign all necessary documents. In the agenda package is a map of the park and all of its proposed developments over the years. The park is currently closed to public. It has been cleaned up from the March 2019 storms, but a lot of work remains to be done. This grant that we're applying for of $700,000, half of me from the state, $3,000 from the county, would greatly further the development of this park.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we authorize the county manager to submit this grant application and sign all necessary documents.
I'll say.
Okay, there's a motion, second, any discussion?
Aye.
He said aye. Okay, all those in favor? Alright, my team carries.
The next item is number nine, project updates. Quickly going through, number four, replacement telephone system for the courthouse admin building, home library, and the community development building. That project has started this week and it should be finished by, it should be completed by late November. But it has started this week with the first phase. Number six, new equipment for this room to allow live streaming and recording meetings. We're still waiting for equipment from Columbus Tech and Video, but the completion should be late October. The equipment is coming over by slow boat. Number 11, a new energy recovery unit at the courthouse. Again, we're waiting for the equipment to be delivered and that should be completed by mid-November. Number 12 was planned tonight, so that is ongoing. Number 24, Mally Lake Dam construction. We have a pre-bid meeting on Thursday. The bid deadline is October 22nd with more consideration on November 3rd, with completion during mid-2021. So that project is coming to fruition and hopefully to a close. Number 39, construct a new customer service building for waterworks. An R Q for architectural services is being advertised, deadline to receive those responses is October 15th. Number 42, renovate the home operations plus 19 funds. The MOU is on tonight's agenda for consideration. Number 45, update the county's land use development codes. A lot of things have been done, focus groups have been done, community workshops have been completed, surveys have been filled out. And a steering committee is going to meet sometime this month. And the big idea meeting, which is a culmination of all of these meetings, the focus group meetings, the community workshop meetings, all the things that have been mentioned and said and discussed at all these meetings are now going to be brought to the board's attention during the big idea meeting, which is scheduled for during the board retreat of October 22nd. So, so the, and that joint meeting between the board of commissioners, the planning commission, as well as the steering committee, and the consultant, Wood, to tell everybody what they have found out thus far from all the public input, from reading all of our codes, understanding what is going on, what we need. And that will be the beginning of preparing the first draft of the updated land use codes.
It is one of the, maybe the planning commission, board commissioners, and?
The steering committee, the public, and Wood Consulting. And it, we got schedules from 6:00 to 7:00, I go over a little bit. But at least the land use project, updating all the land use codes is, the project is maturing and it's getting faster and faster. And hopefully, we hope to have this project done by the end of the year. You can see in this plus and lost in T-Spot collections, they were holding their own. They were lower than last month, but higher than last year. And if you look at T-Spots, the T-Spot collection looks a little strange. It's double than what we usually get. We usually get like $95,000 a month. For the month of August, but for the check we received in September for August activity was right at $184,000.
What about hotel hotel tax?
For June 30, it held its own. We budgeted 90, I think we got 85.
That was another question we were about to ask, when is that next, that day? Quarterly, that day on the, the term is on, why don't y'all want to ask from the chairman? Should be soon, right?
This month, like this month. But we inquired about why T-Spots were so excessively high. We found out, the state of Georgia, with their auditors, audited a major company that has presence in the state. They went and let us know what company. But when they audited this huge company, that it was discovered that they needed to pay more. So every county and every city got a prograted share during that month. And that's one top shot.
This 183, is that including what the cities?
No.
And there's not?
That is county only. So.
That's probably still isn't, paying all that dollars.
So if Harris County received an extra $90,000, what did all the other counties and all the other cities and the state receive?
So it's in the state, not just in our T-Spot region?
No, it's in, it was a statewide audit of a, of a major company, where they say with presence in almost every county. And when they audited them, the company came up short. So they had to pay them an extra and that money was distributed, and there it is. So we got, we received basically an extra month of T-Spots. And.
I think we're going to go to those counties, regions that had voted positively for the T-Spot.
That was.
Whoever has, whoever gets it.
And under building permits, the number for September was 15, which is kind of low. So we're at a total of 58 single-family home building permits issued for this this week. If you have to answer any questions, the board may have it.
Randy, on number 31, where the stall and the wooden poles and the soccer lights?
Yes.
Have we gotten the new specs that I know soccer extension was coming up with? Have we gotten that yet so we can proceed with it?
The answer is no. After repeated requests.
Okay, can I hear these right now? Randy, Russell?
Yes, Madam Chairman, thank you. Number 10 on y'all's agenda is they propose the freedom of understanding of the University of Georgia for cooperative extension services. The county currently pays a portion of the payroll expenses for the Ag Agent Secretary, Foreagent Agent, and one of the Foreagent Program assistants. And then the extension services pays all the payroll expenses for the other Foreagent Program. Few changes are to enter into NOU county regarding these services. The last thing was done in 2011. As NOU said that the county is to provide for the extension services plus how personnel to pay. As the NOU will be effective from the date of execution until termination by either party, our credit notice provided 90 days in advance. A motion and a vote is needed for this.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, and I will second. Is there any discussion?
Only discussion I have, just a question of, since the last one was done in 2011 and then Russell said that this will go until whenever, so we don't have to do this. It's not one of those we do every year, we don't.
Just whatever the state feels like it.
Right, that pretty much is the question, whatever things we need to do.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
That's right, and this is an interim agreement, so you think you can go up to this year or so? It certainly can go up for a while.
Alright, man.
Alright, thank you, sir. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, motion is approved. Okay, next.
Alright, thank you. Madam Chairman, the last item on your agenda is the MOU proposal for the Mercer Medicine Clinic. As the board is well aware, for the citizens of 2014, more than 2,000 medical clinics and advanced libraries to encourage the community to access the healthcare and possibly the school districts to pay healthcare athletes for the access. Mercer Medicine Health, the associate Mercer University School President, has expressed an interest to operate that clinic. Therefore, the NOU has to prepare detailed responsibilities of each party, including the county, the school district, and Mercer Medicine. The MOU has been reviewed by authorities and that now ready for execution. When the requirements of the NOU have been satisfied, the old libraries will be used in the medical clinic. A peace agreement will be prepared between the county and Mercer Medicine to officially lease the old libraries from the county. And a motion and a vote is needed for this.
Okay, thank you, Russell.
I move that we, well, I just lost one, train is off. I move that we approve the Mercer Medicine MOU. I'll say.
Okay. Alright, is there any discussion?
I will say that I went to the forum at the Hill last night at the High School Auditorium and it was pretty informative and everybody that was there had none of the positive things to say about it as they were leaving. So, you know, I'm glad that we're getting on board with this.
Okay, is there any discussion? Alright, all those in favor, we've come to that already?
Aye.
Okay. Motion is approved. Okay, does anyone have anything else? I'm asking for executive session so that I can, the attorney can discuss litigation with us. So is there a motion going to executive session?
I move we go into executive session to discuss litigation.
I'll second that, and all you can do is get me, he's down on the pressure for that, babe.
Okay, alright, and, alright.
Madam Russell?
Hold on, all those in favor?
Hold myself on that. Hold myself over there. I'm going to run that.
Executive session, and don't induce anybody to vote.